All right, so welcome again to the AP Physics 1 Test Prep Session with Wise Ants. My name is Brianna Corb and I'm one of the AP Physics tutors here on the tutoring platform. A little bit about myself, so I both write and score the AP Physics questions. What that means is that I help for College Board to write some of the multiple choice questions on various exams. Also for the College Board AP Classroom that some of you may have been using throughout this year. And then also for the free response questions. So that's what I'm going to share with you for this session. The first thing that you see just on the screen here is how your response is actually scored by an AP Physics reader. All of your free response questions, answers this year will be scanned in. So whether that's a picture or scanner, not quite sure how that's going to work. So just a couple of things to keep in mind, the fact that you do want to write dark enough. Again, with that scan, last year if you took any exams yourself or you knew of anyone that took some AP exams, you probably know that they had to take pictures and then those were uploaded. We actually had great success with that particular format. But this year, even those of you that are writing in the paper booklets will have your free response answers scanned in for us to then read. All of the graders this year will still be grading at home. Normally we're able to meet in Kansas City, Missouri and actually have all of your booklets with us. The other thing for your free response answers to kind of keep in mind is to write clear enough. So that once again, your writing, your answers can be seen on a computer screen. So that is just something to keep in mind, again, whether you're writing on paper. And those of you taking the digital exams, probably wondering how that is. So one, hopefully you downloaded the AP application on your computer. If you haven't done that yet, please check with your teacher. But you should have that so that it can come up. And again, have you do a little test on your computer. So just some things that again, as someone that scores your exams. One, we look at the rubric. So if you've ever looked at any practice AP exams, maybe you've seen that there are scoring guidelines. That is something that we actually use for the point breakdown for all of your AP responses. Now you might think that like, oh, this is pretty vague. We'll go through a sample AP paragraph response question today. And you might see that it says something about mentioning conservation of momentum or mentioning conservation of energy. And you think like, oh, that's pretty simple, I can do that. But you need to show us a little bit more with that. So again, those rubrics that you see online, maybe your teacher has used with you in class. We interpret those in terms of how the point breakdown actually works. So no points are awarded on the AP Physics exam. This might be different for other AP exams. But if you have to place a checkmark on a line, if you have to rank a system in terms of this particular outcome will be first and then second and third. You don't get any points unfortunately for placing that checkmark on the line. You do have to have something written underneath, so some kind of explanation evidence that you know. A common phrase for AP graders is when we see some blank responses, right? That we want to tell you to just get the blank off the page. Don't leave a question blank, whether that is for the FRQ, whether that's for the multiple choice. There is no penalty for guessing. Therefore, putting something down that's physics related is always something good to do. Also, if you just write an equation from the equation sheet, again, that's not a high level physics to just kind of copy from an equation sheet onto your test booklet. So that once again would not get any kind of points. The other thing, which again, I know this is very much for AP Physics. I've heard from other graders and different test subjects that it might be different. So again, take this for the AP Physics exams. But if you were to give us two solutions or two answers saying like, well, I'm going to think about it first with force. But then I'm not sure, so I'm also going to do it with energy. And I'll let the grader maybe pick. Perhaps your teacher did this in class. I know that again, with students, we always want to give them the benefit of the doubt. However, with the AP Physics exam, that is not going to help you at all. In fact, if you don't cross out one of those solutions, we read both of them. And you can actually like have points taken away from your solution if you write something incorrectly. So that's kind of the last part of again, somebody as an AP reader. We do want to award points to students. We want to see you succeed on the exam. It is very rewarding as a teacher, as a grader, as someone who just loves physics to see those perfect scores. The thing about that is the fact that we will only see that particular question. So whether it's a seven point question, a 12 point question, if you're doing the paper exam, or a 10 or 15 point question if you're doing the digital exam. But we love to see those scores. Simple answers earn points. So don't think that, well, I only know the first part of this, what's the point of answering? Again, you can still earn a point. Partial credit is definitely something that I know lots of teachers do in class as well, on tests, on exams, quizzes, homeworks. We do the same thing. With our partial credit, it is whole points. So the lowest that we can break apart any particular free response question is into again, those single points. You can lose points. So I know I told you like definitely guess, don't leave anything blank. And we'll talk about this on our sample FRQ question. But if you actually put in too much information, you could actually lose some of those points for that particular part. You will never have negative points. We can't take points away from a different section. So that is something to keep in mind, that you don't want to just give us everything perhaps on a free body diagram or on a graph with lab equipment. So some of those particular questions, again, we want you to be focused. We want to make sure you understand what it is that you were telling us and then go from there. We do grade each point independently. So this is something that just as someone who has been a reader and has helped to set the rubric, we are huge into not having points connected. So therefore, like you will never earn two points for just writing one thing. If that were to be again, on the grading rubric, we would have to actually see that you made the connection correctly. And really, you're probably doing some kind of derivation or substitution with the equations and putting those together. And just not really thinking about the fact that that was actually two parts. You maybe just did it all together. And then the last thing to keep in mind, and this is really more for the lab question. And those are the really long, right, 12 point questions, 25 minutes. They're going to take you a while to write. They usually have some kind of lab procedure, whether it's part of it or analyzing your data. But we cannot read answers that are not written in the correct section. So if it is a question for section A and you just keep writing and then you notice down below for section B that they said, okay, now analyze your data, tell us how you would use your measurements in order to find whatever variable it is that we're looking for. And you had spent all this time writing that for section A. Again, as a reader, we can't go back and say like, oh, they put it here in section A, so I'll just move it or read it for section D. If that's the case, you want to leave us a note. So again, remember that we are people that are grading your free response questions. So you can definitely leave a note, you can put an arrow, things like that to where again, we know that in the moment of the exam, you just got so excited, you wanted to tell us all about your lab procedure from start to finish. So that is definitely something to keep in mind is again, don't leave any section blank. If you feel like, oh, I answered this up above, go ahead and just tell us that. Like please read section A, we can do that. So that is something to again, keep in mind for the actual exam itself. Remember that your multiple choice for that particular section of the exam is just a scantrum. So we don't see that as AP readers at all. In fact, for the questions, we only see our question. So you usually have student numbers. And this is true whether you're doing the booklet, whether you're doing the online. But we would just see your particular answer. We don't know who you are. We don't know what school you went to or anything like that, because again, those are numbers. And we score it. And then something kind of interesting about this, because I know that, you know, maybe you're kind of thinking like, well, how do I know that someone is just getting tired? Or they want to get through the exams? So someone like myself is what we call a table leader. And what I do is I actually back read some of the readers that are on my question. So what that means is that I actually go into the exam solutions myself and I pick out different ones and reread those solutions to see if I would award the same number of points as the original score. And we have kind of a chain of people that go up all the way from readers to table leaders, to question leaders, to exam leaders, and to our chief readers. And this is true for every AP exam. So don't ever think that someone is going to just give you a score. We are really looking for, again, those points that we can award you. As teachers, we apply to be these AP Physics readers. And it's not everyone that applies that is able to read it. So again, we want to be here, we want to read the exams, we want to see your solutions. We love seeing alternate solutions as well. So that's something that I often get as a question is with students like, oh, I must have written something that the grader didn't understand. All the graders are either AP Physics teachers or physics professors at colleges and universities. So if you have a solution that isn't making sense or we're not sure about it, we're definitely going to ask again, our table leader, our question leader, our exam leader. It's going to kind of make its way up the chain to make sure that we're not taking something that perhaps again, we're not sure about. So rest assured that your questions again, are graded very accurately. We want to give you those points and again, hope that you do well on the exam overall. The next thing that I wanted to talk about then is just the importance of graphs on the AP exam. So with this, when you see a graph, you should think of two things. One would be the slope and the second thing would be the area. Any graph that you see in physics will be able to tell you something from one of these two things. You're going to use the units on the graph. So in order to again, look at our graphs, I know most of you probably did your graphs when you were doing motion. That's where we usually do it again, in the physics curriculum. So with that, just if we kind of draw a simple graph here, you know that you have again, like your distance and time graphs. So in that case, with this slope, we get velocity. Now, something to kind of keep in mind is just the fact that again, if you had a lab, because this comes up pretty often, and if we're able to get to those lab points or lab tips for the free response, we'll go over that as well. But remember that with this, so it's something we call linearizing data. And here, if we were to change that x-axis to t squared, we would then change our slope to the area. So this is a pretty common, again, I take measurements in the lab, I'm going to measure a certain distance. I have my phone usually in order to measure that time. If I just have distance and time, again, that's just going to give me the velocity. And it's very common to where we want to find a force for a particular lab setup that we have. So a lot of students kind of miss that in-between point. They tell us take distance and time and then all of a sudden they've gotten to acceleration. So we love when you use graphs for your explanation for lab questions as well. So don't think that you just have to write to us in sentences. Again, the question that we'll be kind of working on with that paragraph response is definitely a question or question that requires sentences. And we'll talk about how physics teachers and professors kind of see a paragraph might be a little bit different than what you've done for other classes or again, other AP exams. But we really enjoy graphs, so use your units from the graph. Again, let that help you with the fact of, okay, if I take this with my y and my x axes, I divide those two things, what unit is that going to give me? What variable does that then give me? Or for area, right, the one that we like most often with our, so we'll do a different graph. So force and distance. And again, with this, if we have our area here, so we know that force times distance would give us work. So again, with this, we can then answer various questions. If we know the mass of something, what that force particularly may be for the work. So I see that we have a question, it's about the graphs, so we'll answer this one. So the question says, what do you mean by area with t squared? So with this one, I think what you mean is for the area, so this should say acceleration. So I was using just your variable with that. So with this one, I was doing the slope of this particular graph. And this is coming from your kinematics equation. So if we do the equation on again, your equation sheet, x equals x naught plus v naught times t plus one half, there we go, one half a t squared. So with this particular graph that I have drawn here, I'm kind of doing this second or third term, depending on how you usually set that reference point with your x naught. So in this case, since we started right at again, that zero point, I then with this, as we call it linearizing data, kind of set this up, so I have y equals mx plus b. So here you'll notice that my y-axis is the x and that's what I have there. This t squared is then what I have for my x-axis on the graph. And therefore I have this one half a. So that's actually going to be the slope of the line, because that lines up with where in the equation, for your equation of a line, again, y equals mx plus b. So that one half a is the slope. So therefore, I would actually expect for the slope of this particular graph, if I was looking for acceleration, usually we're going to be looking for that acceleration of gravity, so g. So I'd actually expect for that value to be 4.9, maybe five, again, depending on what our error might be because of the fact that it has that one half constant that's in there. So this is something that again, you are able to do. We love seeing when you do this and can make these connections between the equations. So all the equations you have in your equation sheet, you should be able to, again, what we consider linearizing your data. So the same thing would work with the again, like work equation, momentum equation, impulse equation, and even everything with rotation. So that's just something to keep in mind, that's usually kind of the unit that again, people get the most stuck on. But anything can be linearized with graphs, just thinking again, of those particular, particular axes. All right, so let's go on to our next one. All right, so just changing screens here. All right, so for the paragraph response. So this type of question, these are the ones that I really enjoy grading. I've written again, multiple different paragraph response questions. So again, I think that they leave the most room for interpretation for students. So therefore, students don't always get all the points for a paragraph response question. So the things that I would definitely keep in mind, and I've kind of written it over to the side just as examples as well. But to definitely underline key words in the questions to think about your physics terms. So for example, when you see that word collision, hopefully that brings to mind right away that it actually is momentum. Then you're going to be thinking about, is this collision inelastic, is it elastic? Really, those are the only two types of collisions you have to worry about. I know that there are various teachers and students that also kind of add that word to the beginning of it, of perfectly inelastic or perfectly elastic. Again, we're fine as graders to just see the word elastic and inelastic. Then you should think about topics in terms of again, like with this keyword such as collision, what does that make you think of? So again, hopefully that collision word makes you think of momentum. Momentum and energy are usually very closely related, so that's something to keep in mind as well. And the fact that in terms of the breakdown, if you looked at the percentage of the different topics that are actually covered on the exam, since they've cut off the circuits with electricity and then also waves. So again, that right-hand side of your equation sheet, which the equation sheet is staying as is. So hopefully you don't use any of those equations over there. But College Board as of right now has said that they're not going to remake the equation sheet. I believe they just wanted everyone to kind of know where all those equations are. I know that I've kind of memorized different locations of where to look for simple harmonic motion or rotation. So you've probably done the same if you've used that equation sheet in class. So again, just wanted you to be the most familiar with it and not cause any changes this close to the exam. Then you're going to make a quick outline. And again, we'll go through this on our sample question. With quick, I mean like writing down words. We do not do outlines, again, the same as we do for English papers. For if you do a thesis sentence, you have to make connections, how many sentences? When again, you see this paragraph response, right? I don't want you to think about like, oh, how many sentences does this have to have? But rather the fact that you're writing in sentences. Then you're going to for hints four and five, kind of now put yourself into the test writers' thinking. So when I write a question for free response, I also write the rubric. I therefore write, here's what I'm looking for, here's what I'm thinking about with this question in terms of the point breakdown. So again, if there are multiple questions or objects, I should say, in the question, that's what I, as the question writer, was wanting you to compare. There's going to be two, this could be three. So that's something again, that you want to think like the question writer. The same thing, if I have you making a free body diagram, I'm wanting you to think about force. Then it's kind of putting that into what other key words, what other topics does force relate to? And finally, you're going to review your answer again, with that checkmark or if there's a ranking with the particular question, you're going to make sure you agree with yourself. We for physics usually, as I said, do not give that point for the checkmark. Most of the time, we don't even really care, again, you should have something checked. But we're not particularly concerned with the fact that maybe you have the wrong answer checked. You think that something stayed the same when really it's increased or decreased. Okay, so what we're going to do as the reader, that we see that checkmark, you think that it stays the same. We're going to read through your answer for this paragraph. And as long as you have agreed with yourself, you will get full credits. Now, sometimes that's the case, other times it isn't. So I don't want to say that that's always, but you will not get credit for that if you disagree with yourself. So while some students like to kind of make a prediction with where they place that checkmark or how they do the ranking, that's great, but just make sure that you go back and actually say like, yes, I agree that this does stay the same. Or as you read through and have now put your evidence down into the question and your solution, you've actually decided like, oh, this actually increases or decreases. So again, agreeing with yourself is definitely something that we highly recommend. But make sure that you check that, because that often gets overlooked. But that is a great point to again, just make sure that you're getting because of the fact that you were answered. All right, so just checking some questions, see if anything goes up here. Okay, so one of the questions says, how do you recommend studying or approaching conceptual questions? So I absolutely love conceptual questions, that's really what the AP 1 exam is all about. So in terms of studying or approaching those, I would definitely look at again, old AP questions, College Board. AP Central has those online. And if you're not sure about again, like how to score them, you can still look at the scoring guidelines and kind of just see, was I thinking about the correct topics? It was a collision problem, was I thinking momentum, did I bring in energy? Did I at least talk about what it said in those scoring guidelines? For free body diagram that you may have to draw, did I include all the forces correctly? Were they pointing the correct direction? Did I put any extra forces that shouldn't have been there? So those are really easy things to check with even just the questions for the free response that are online. The next question says, would we lose points for a response where we give multiple reasons? For example, kinematic and energy for an object in free fall, they do not contradict each other. No, so you would not lose points for a response where you're just, and in fact, for the paragraph response, usually that's exactly what you have to do. So we are wanting you to make those connections. And therefore, you are going to have to talk about at least two topics. So something to keep in mind is for the free response questions, as question writers, we are only able to write a question about one major topic, possibly two. But if I'm writing a 15-point question, so that would be for the digital exam this year, I then had to do 12 points out of that 15 on that one particular topic. So what topics are those? You have kinematics, you have your forces, which is what we call dynamics. You have energy and work, momentum and impulse, rotation, and that's it. So just those five as the main topics. Now I know some of you are like, wait, we did simple harmonic motion. That's not necessarily its own major topic. We usually try to fit that in with again, pendulums or springs. We use the period equation with that capital T, just to make sure you know what it is. But in terms of this year, it was not necessarily a major topic. But it will still come up again as different parts, it'll definitely come up in your multiple choice. So just something to keep in mind. And then number three says, when we explain our lab procedure, should we include how to use the data? So with this, if the lab procedure asks, usually that's the second part of the question. So again, they'll have, what equipment do you want to use? That's definitely something you want to check, just like the checkmark in your paragraph response is the fact that your equipment matches what you've put into your procedure. So don't tell me that you're going to use everything that you can think of in your physics lab. And I know some of you did online labs, some of you did labs maybe at home. So we know that, again, just keep that in mind. But meter sticks, your cell phones, because those have stopwatches on them, they have different camera settings, you can stick pictures. Those are perfectly fine in terms of pieces of equipment. So don't think that like, oh, I can't say that I use my phone for a lab. If you did, please tell us. But in terms of the data, we're not expecting you to use actual numbers. So with that, like we're just looking for, again, if you were to make a graph, what would you put on the axes? If you were to make a data table, what type of data would you actually want to collect? So that's all with the procedure of your lab question. And then usually the next part, again, depending on how many parts of that lab question there are, then it's going to say, how would you analyze the data? So again, here's where you're going to give me a graph and you're going to tell me what you're going to put on those axes. Here's, we're going to use an equation and you're going to say, all right, I have to calculate the acceleration or I have to calculate the force and here's how I'm going to do it. Again, we definitely would know how, but that's part of the question. And those are how you earn the points for the question is by telling us what that is. So again, something with that is that you can never over explain to a physics teacher how to do something. But with the lab procedure, make sure that you're still keeping in mind, it should be about five to seven, maybe eight steps total. Again, we don't want you to write a 20-step lab procedure. You should be able to go through your lab procedure in that amount of steps. And then at some point, say, repeat steps one through three, so many times, changing the mass or changing the force, changing the time. And I want to do it in increments of five seconds or 10 Newtons of force, 50 grams of mass. Just something like that, like that would be a good spot to put in numbers. But we're not looking for again, an absolutely perfect lab procedure. We want to see that it kind of makes sense, it's doable. So that's something to keep in mind as well and that you go from there. So next question says, can we reference calculus knowledge, like how the derivative of the position graph is velocity? So yes, you can definitely reference calculus knowledge. In fact, you can use your calculator on all of the parts of the exam as well. I know that a lot of people, when you have to find time, which usually we don't make you do this, but I know sometimes it comes up. Maybe with that equation that I had written out for your kinematics equation where time appears in two locations, both the time and a time squared on positions. You can use your graphing calculator to graph that and then tell us as your answer, I graphed this. Usually then students just kind of sketch the graph of what it looked like. I found where it intersected and that's how I found the time. That is perfectly fine. Again, we're not expecting you to do everything in terms of derivations, showing us what it is. But don't let something just kind of jump into your answer or don't even let an answer just kind of appear. We do have to see some kind of work, but again, we read it, we're people, we know that you do that in class. So therefore, it's perfectly fine for you to do it on the exam. Let's see, the next question says, will you go over how this information applies to online testers? So with the paragraph response, that's why I thought it was a good question for us to start with, because of the fact that you will have a paragraph response on the online exam as well. So on the online exam, you'll have two free response questions. One is the paragraph. One is the paragraph, which will be ten points for you versus seven points for those students taking it on paper. And you'll also have what we call the quantitative qualitative. So Q Q question, and that will be fifteen points for the digital exam and ten, twelve. Very twelve points for the paper exam. Those usually students enjoy more. So again, I'll do that in our second session coming up in two weeks, kind of diving more into that Q Q question to show you that, but that one's more broken apart. So therefore students can kind of figure out again, a little bit more with what's expected, just because there are more parts of that particular question. Let's see, next question says, did I hear you correctly that there will not be questions pertaining to electricity and waves? Yes, you did. So back in December, College Board said for the A P Physics one exam that electricity and waves are no longer on the Physics one curriculum. So if your teacher happened to teach that, I'm sure maybe they just liked the topic. I know that I did, I know waves especially goes really well with simple harmonic motion. So maybe you did learn about the crest or the trough. Again, we had to do amplitude, you did wavelength, period, all those kinds of things. But waves in terms of oscillations and different gauge that the frequency of harmonics, open and closed tubes, things like that. Again, if you learn that, really, if you see any of those equations on the right hand side of the equation sheet for electricity and then also for waves, that is not going to be any type of question, whether multiple choice or free response on this year's A P one exam. We're not sure where those two topics are necessarily going to go. Or how College Board might reconfigure A P Physics one and two, we'll let them do that. But yes, you will not have that on your exam for this year. All right, and then. Let's see, so go to, want to get over our question then, okay. So. And show you kind of how. Okay, so with this, I'll make it as large as I can just so you can see this. So again, this is a paragraph question. So once you go through, like with my hints, kind of what it is that I meant by all of that. So with this, let's see, first thing I had told you was to underline the words are keywords in the question to think about physics terms. So if you read through this particular question, right, we have a student striking a block at the bottom of ramp. Giving initial speed V naught up the ramp as shown, there is friction between the ramp and the block. Is it slides a distance X up the ramp and then slides back down? So right away, right, I'm looking at this picture, I'm noticing it's a block. So therefore I know it's not going to be rotation. It's going up a ramp, right, we love inclined planes. They don't give me any kind of an angle for it, so at least I don't have to worry necessarily about those components, right? Again, we're not going to calculate something, it might come in later though. So right now, I'm kind of thinking, write this up here. Since they're asking me to draw free body diagrams in terms of question A, definitely thinking of force. The other thing, right, I see this velocity, I see a distance, so I'm definitely thinking kinematics. Which again, just by definition, is motion without force. So it's nice that they put these two things together, because otherwise by themselves, we wouldn't necessarily always have that. So those are kind of the two main things that I'm thinking right now, there's no collision. I know that it strikes the block and that's definitely something that we're going to be careful with for part A. Where we're drawing our free body diagrams. So if we have a strike, that's just an impact, a very short contact time with the particular block. The student is not pushing the block up the ramp. Therefore, I know right away, there's no applied force. So that's something to be careful with. Again, that would probably be something that I would underline, just because of the fact I want to remind myself of the fact that it is just a strike. So it's a very short time just to get the block moving, but that's not going to be that sustained force. All right, so on my dots here, and again, this is a good indication that we don't have rotation, just because of the fact we are using these dots. So we do like to use those for our free body diagrams. And it says to draw and label the forces, not components. So again, I don't want to break apart any of these forces, I might have to do that later on. And then it says represent each force by distinct arrow, starting on and pointing away from the dot. So please make sure that you do read the question. If it's asking you to represent these forces in a particular manner. Again, it's telling me to label them, it's saying to start at the dot and then put the arrows away from that. I do want to make sure that that's how I draw it. The same thing, if the question says, right, for the digital exam, just to get back to that particular question. Obviously, you will not be able to draw free body diagrams. So the way that we switch your question for something like this is the fact that we drew, as question writers, we drew you two or three different free body diagrams. Because you're only able to type your answer, you then have to pick which free body diagram is correct. And then also explain why. So therefore you're going to be thinking of, did they put all the forces? Are they pointing in the correct direction or they labeled correctly? So those are kind of the differences with if you're doing this particular question on paper versus if you were to do this question in the digital exam. So you're still going to have free body diagrams, you're still going to have graphs. You just won't be able to make them yourself. So it's going to be much more in terms of like, again, choosing which one's correct, telling us why. So that's definitely a point, again, that comparison point for, here's the correct diagram, here's my reasoning why. And then also, why are the ones incorrect? So don't forget about those. If you're drawing them yourself, hopefully you shouldn't be telling me that you put an incorrect force on there. But that is something to just again, keep in mind. All right, so we have our gravitational force, which I just label that as F G. And that's on both of them because we always have gravity. Now notice for this particular question, it didn't say that I had to draw them at any particular length. So again, as long as I have the forces, other questions, especially if you have a grid box. So that's something to keep in mind as well. Is just the fact that you want to kind of look at the question, see what it wants and gives you in terms of then like, how detailed can I make that answer? So since we don't have a grid box here, we're not going to worry about the length or the magnitude. The next one then, and again, not in the particular order, but I'm going to draw my normal force on both of these. All right, so we know that there's friction, we'll kind of draw that or label that as well. So for this particular question, right, if we're going up the ramp versus down the ramp. We want to make sure we draw friction in the correct direction. So when it's going up the ramp, remember that friction just opposes the motion. So in this case, I would draw friction going down the ramp. And then as the block goes down the ramp, friction again opposes the motion. So therefore it's going to point up the ramp. So here are my two free body diagrams. Again, thinking like the question writer, I made two free body diagrams, even though they have three forces on them. I did two things, that's two points, just like this. Again, since it struck, the student struck the block, it's not going to have an applied force. So that's something that if you were to put the applied force on there, you would lose one of the points for this particular free body diagram. Now, if you put the applied force on both free body diagrams, for some reason. It doesn't say that it pushes it or has to be pushed back down the ramp, so hopefully you wouldn't put that applied force there. But again, this is worth two points for part A, you would still get one point. So you can't ever lose or have negative points for a particular question. The same thing, if you didn't notice that it said not components and you started to draw in more forces for those X and Y components for the gravitational force. You would again, lose points, but only up to two. So you could either end up for part A with zero points, one or two. So right now, we have two points. So that leaves us with, from this seven point question, at five points remaining for our paragraph. So that right there gives me a clue in terms of how many sentences I need to write for this paragraph. So with this, just to kind of read for part B, it says, the block takes time T up to slide up the ramp a distance X, the block then takes time T down to slide back down the ramp or the bottom of the ramp, where its speed V F is T down greater than equal to or less than T up. So again, here we have this checkmark. Even if you decide to check something, you're not going to get points just for checking it. If you check the wrong thing, again, just agree with yourself, that's perfectly fine. So I'm going to leave this till the end, but right now I know that they're asking something about time. So we have kinematics and force before. I'm going to again, be thinking of what topics or physics terms I could then use to connect what they had me draw for part A, which is force and what question they're asking me for part B, which is time. So therefore I'm going to make a sentence about force and I know I need to conclude with time. How do I get in between those two particular topics? So with this, since we know that it's this block and therefore it's the same block, it's going to have the same mass. I'm going to say something about acceleration. And then just to, again, like we said, making sure that we don't make too big of a jump between how time and acceleration might be related. I'm also going to say something about velocity. They also in the question kind of mentioned, right, with this, it starts with an initial speed of V naught. But it ends with this speed of V F. So really they've given me just about everything that I need to talk about in the question itself. Right, the only thing they didn't necessarily give me was acceleration. Stating the fact that I needed to say something about it, but everything else kind of shows up in the question. And that's the key words that you want to be aware of for your paragraph. So with this, just to again, kind of move this out of the way, so it doesn't block your question. There we go, okay. So the first thing with force, again, I'm going to look at this. I don't have any kind of components on this, which again, I know we usually do for F G. But as it says, do not add anything to the figures in part A. Since we wouldn't know that you added those after the fact, we do want to leave our figures exactly as is. If you look at these, again, they're just looking as though we only have friction, but hopefully. And you can definitely add more, just not to the figures in part A. So with this, we would have that gravitational force. So F G X going down in both cases, we have our dot. And then, right, we have F F if it's going down the ramp. And then F F over here, if it's going up the ramp, all right. And the question, just because someone had asked about F G, so I know that that is the way that I write it. Again, maybe you wrote it different in class, but the question said, should we label the force of gravity by F G or M G? So since it's a force and it does go on to your free body diagram, usually we would want you to label it with F G. Now, if you wrote M G, again, we definitely know what that is. And if people called that the weight, so I've definitely seen that as like F W as well. Depending on how you kind of interpreted that, I know in some teachers are kind of picky with the fact that like masses and kilograms, but weights and Newtons, weights of force. So we want to use again, that particular symbol, that's fine. If you are not sure, if that's okay, right, you can always write it over to the side, just kind of saying, hey, I used F G to be M G, right? Just draw our attention to it, perfectly fine. We know what that is, that's an equation on your equation sheet. So again, we can't give you a point for just that, but we can definitely see and know that you were like, hey, I use this to be the same thing. So perfectly fine with either notation with that. All right, so I drew my little kind of extra, at least like the forces on the parallel part of the inclined plane. So if we look at the up versus the down, this should then help me kind of decide and see. Yeah, that net force is not the same on the way up as it is on the way down. So since that's kind of the first thing that they asked me about, and again, not put sentences necessarily have to go in order. But usually they make kind of a logical sense. So I know I wrote my outline in that way, but we'll hopefully put it together a little bit better for our paragraph. So for a paragraph, you can definitely include equations, but that's exactly what it should be. It's just that they should be included. Don't use bullet points, don't write to us in like notes or phrases, right? Please use real sentences, meaning like they actually sound like a sentence. They have your right noun and verb and period and capital letters. We don't care if you spell anything incorrectly, right? This is not a grammar test by any means. But again, show us the fact that you can actually do this paragraph response for physics. Because again, that is kind of the big part in difference with the A P Physics one exam. All right, so with this net force, since we drew our extra kind of just along the parallel. I would say that the net force is greater when the block is sliding up the ramp. So the question with that then is, do we have to say why? I would say looking at my diagram forces along the ramp. So I drew it right there, right? Diagrams are perfectly fine, it says right there in the very first sentence even, they also contain figures and or equations. So I drew it, I don't have to explain exactly what that is, right? Again, this is being read by a physics teacher, physics professor, also people that read these questions. Do the interpretations with the rubrics, no physics, so yeah, we can look at a diagram. All right, the next thing I have written is time, but again, that was just because part B asked me about time. I think that the better connection would definitely be with acceleration. So as we said, this is the same box, so therefore my next sentence is just going to be about acceleration. Well, I already said the net force is greater when the block is sliding up the ramp. And again, I looked at my diagram of forces along the ramp that I had drawn. So therefore my next sentence, I would say that the acceleration of, they call it a block, of the block is greater on the way up. So you might be thinking to yourself like, hmm, that's a pretty easy, simple sentence. As we said previously, right, we like easy, simple sentences. It's different with the fact that you used a different physics term. So that's a different point, right? Again, we're looking here for this paragraph, we already got two points for part A. So we're looking for an additional five for part B, right? We have four physics terms that we're going to make a single sentence out of each of those. So you might be wondering like, where's that fifth point coming from? The fifth point comes from the fact that you make a clear coherent paragraph. Yes, you do get a point for actually writing a paragraph in the paragraph question. That should be a really easy point to get. So again, this question, which might seem like, I don't know what to write, I don't know what to say. Very easy when you break it down and break it apart and just kind of realize the fact that again, physics teachers are the ones that are asking you to write this paragraph, we're also the ones grading it. We don't need you to write us elaborate paragraphs, but rather tell us about the physics. So the next thing then is the velocity. This is the one that most people again, either forgot or they weren't sure about. So with velocity, I said that the speed changes more on the way up. And this is due to the acceleration being greater up the ramp and covering the same distance. I will move this up. Might kind of throw off my free body diagrams, but that should be okay. All right. All right, so with this again, the next part of the speed that people were kind of asking about was, there we go. Lost it. So the next part with the speed that some people, again, were kind of thinking about. Again, you remember what we had for our ramps. Is the fact that can we again, use those equations? Yes, so with this, if we're kind of thinking for the ramp, again, we have our kinematics equation. So we can do X, go on X. One and B squared, here we go. So B squared equals the naught squared plus two A X. So this was how I kind of proved, again, just with the fact that the speed being different, so that velocity. Now the V naught, again, we know that it starts moving, but it comes to rest. Now the V naught, again, we know that it starts moving, but it comes to rest. And then at the top, it starts at rest and then it begins to move. So really, in either case, the up or the down, one of those velocities is going to go to zero. So just for simplicity sake, um, I'm going to say that my, the initial is zero, right? So you can think of this for on the way down. But then if I'm looking for this velocity, which in this case it would be the VF, it would be the square root of two ax, right? So with this, again, this is how relating your distance, which is the same for both blocks, to the acceleration, which again, we already made our statement from the net force being greater on the way up, the acceleration of the block being greater on the way up, therefore the velocity has to be greater. Um, again, more of that speed change. So the velocity point, you kind of had a couple ways to think about it, but that was probably the one that most students missed, just because they weren't really sure, and also with the fact of like, oh, I need to make sure I'm going to do that. And then our very last one, um, just ran out of room, so I'll type it up above, but it should be the end of my paragraph, um, is about time. So with this one, again, um, if we kind of think of our time, because this is our check mark that we also want to make, um, with the fact of time, so with this one, um, we can say, again, that the time is going to be, so time is greater on the way down, um, due to a slower velocity and acceleration. So whichever way you're kind of thinking of this, because again, it still is covering that acceleration, obviously does accelerate on the way down. Um, but we were told about that particular V final, um, so due to a slower, and I'll just put in um, average velocity to make it, again, include that acceleration. So for my last final part of this question then, I want to make sure that I check the correct, right? Like ta- time down is greater than the time up. Um, these were my four sentences, dealing again with force, time, acceleration, velocity. I did my two free body diagrams, didn't have any extra forces, and therefore, again, was able to gain that last point for the paragraph. Again, I know that my last sentence would be at the bottom. Um, so with that, um, again, that is a good example for your paragraph response. All right, and then just to finish up, um, it says, what percentage of the points do we need for a five or a four? So for the AP Physics one exam, it's usually around fifty percent for a five. Um, it varies by about like five percent plus or minus, uh, depending on the year. So it could be as low as, I guess, like forty-five, forty-eight, um, depending on the exam, as high as, you know, I don't think we've had any over sixty yet, um, and then the four again drops below that. Um, but not sure with exact percentage points, because it does depend after the cut scores come from the exam itself. Um, and then the last question, it looks like, uh, we have is, um, is it okay to use more than one explanation to explain an answer, or is that considered too much information um, for answers? So yeah, I would just use one explanation to explain your answer. Um, again, we like clear, simple, straightforward answers, we want to see that you know what it is. I would definitely not suggest for this one to talk about force three different times. Um, so again, don't think that just writing or filling up space is going to make your answer better. If you're not talking about something different, it really shouldn't be there. Um, so that's something to keep in mind with whether it's a QQ question, um, or a paragraph question. And then, um, so can you talk about the differences between the online and digital exams in terms of questions, F R Q points and number of questions? Yes, so for, again, the online and digital exam, you'll have two free response. The paragraph question will be ten points, and then your QQ question will be fifteen. So you will just have those two. Um, you will then have more multiple choice questions, so you should still have the overall same number of points. Um, and then, let's see, it says fifty percent on both the FRQs or both, so I'm guessing that probably goes with the points to get a five or four. Um, so yeah, your scores are added together and they are evenly weighted. So it is fifty percent, like overall for the exam. Most students do better on the free response, just because of the fact that they're graded by a person. Um, you're able to kind of say more things to earn those partial credit points. Um, and that's probably true for anything that you do with exams in terms of written answers or multiple choice. Um, but that's what we kind of see statistically just from AP exams in general. Um, all right, so, let's see. Um, the last question says, what percent accuracy is equivalent to a four or a five? Um, so I'm not sure, I guess like maybe what percent correct? Um, so again, so aiming kind of for that fifty percent. Um, the biggest thing is to not leave a question blank, right? Or any part of a question, because you can earn points. For some reason, if you didn't know how to do part A, you can still earn points for part B, right? So never give up on a question, um, free response or multiple choice. And I know that'll be a little different for those of you taking the digital exam, because you can't really go back um, to those questions, but answer it, right? Be confident, know, um, that yes, you do know the physics, right? You've been studying it all year. Uh, if you have questions and things like that, to reach out to people like myself. Um, but time now for us to go. So again, I do have another, um, session in a couple of weeks, if you're interested, I'll definitely be talking more about those QQ questions then, um, and the lab response questions, so I'll kind of change it. Um, again, with like what we talked about, just in case you do want to come to both of them, um, because the exam, the first one, at least is major. All right, so we'll wrap up for today. Um, again, if you want to reach out to me for a tutoring session, contact me with the link, um, that Wise Ants has just dropped in the chat. Um, also, if you're studying for other AP exams, please check out the thirty plus other AP study sessions with Wise Ants happening over the next few weeks. Check the second link in the chat for more information about signing up. Thank you so much for joining me tonight on this Tuesday. Good luck with all your exams, I cannot wait to read your responses um, and to see some great physics, right? See some perfect papers, perfect scores, especially for these paragraph questions. Um, and again, two more weeks, um, I'll be back, and we'll talk about QQ questions and lab procedure or lab questions. So have a good night. Um, and again, hopefully I'll see you sometime in the future. But otherwise, I'm Brianna Corb, and again, it was nice to meet all of you here and talk to you about AP Physics one. Thank you.